Cock County Legislative Body Meeting is now in session. Sheriff Norman Smith presiding, Mayor Rob Mathis is present.
Mr. Verdo.
Father, we think this time that we can gather together. We ask your presence upon this meeting. We ask that things we do and say in this meeting be pleased and nothing. Father, we ask that you keep us safe as we go home. We ask that things be well over there.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everybody that has come out tonight. This is an open, public meeting concerning zoning. We do want to hear it from as many of the public as we can tonight. So we've got only two minutes. And we will not, this is not a question and answer session. This will be, we want to hear no concerns about the proposal. That being said, first one on the list is Bill Ywais. Roll call. Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. He can come on up and then we'll do a roll call while you're done there.
Okay.
Let's do a roll call while he's, while we're getting ready.
Andy Ford.
Here.
Phil Miller.
Here.
Kell Glazer.
Here.
Jason McMahon.
Here.
Normansman.
Here.
Tracy Stapp.
Here.
Jonathan Templin.
Here.
Jeff Esslinger.
Here.
Dan Bright.
Here.
Wilma Ball.
Here.
Rick Vassar.
Yes.
David Verdo.
Here.
Tim Lehman.
Here.
Mr. Ywais, if you could tell us what district you're from, it'd be great.
Seven.
Seven, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor.
Chairman.
Okay. What I'm here to talk about is this zoning thing. All right. I'm kind of both between and for and against both then. Now, for is for mobile home parks, camping parks, in Texas, a tiny house. But all these people are getting by without paying in taxes like all the rest of us taxpayers are. Like they pay a large amount to park their homes, but then at the end of the day, they're not paying taxes like the rest of us. Okay? So if we could stop it now, it should have been done probably 25, 50 years ago. So we're a little late to get started on that. The next thing is, we need to work this to where it won't hurt small people. I know I'm a big guy, but I go with a smile, okay? It's small people, like if I want to build that house in my backyard by code, I want it to look right and do right. And if you want to build a shed, I want your ability. So we need to work this to where it would help the small guys plus that. Businessmen, starting businesses and stuff and everything. I said, everybody needs an equal opportunity too. But see, this is stepping on so many people's feet. But when I am for mostly is the tax money. Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Tim Lee. Tim.
Tim Lee.
Tim Lee.
Tim Lee.
Could you tell us what district you're from, please?
I'm not sure what district I'm from.
Okay, go ahead.
What brought my wife and I here is my brother and his wife moved to Cock County about five years ago and in the process of visiting. We found it to be a great community and wanted to be here ourselves when we retired. So we've got like 125 acres of old mountain and real happy to be here. But what concerns me with this, and maybe I'll offer a different perspective, is that we've come from Myrtle Beach, Ohio. In the 1980s, we had zoning kind of pushed on us and everybody was for it because we got sold that it was really good. It'd be great for all the locals that had farms. And my family had a farm about 20 miles off the beach. And it didn't turn out to be that. It started that way, but what happened as we grew, zoning grew the county because now all of a sudden you've got all these different departments and they have to have people for those jobs. And county government just grew and grew. And then we ended up with a bigger courthouse and a bigger place to do business. It increased our taxes. It actually turned out to be a lot more negative than what it resulted initially. And then what happened is all the people moving to our area from all over the country, mostly from up north, came in with different values and different opinions than what we had locally. Well, then when that happened and things weren't quite like they wanted, they started getting involved into local politics and local government. And now our county council is over 50% of locals. Well, now what happens when they're voting, they're not really voting for the locals that are from that county. They're voting for people like yourselves that moved there because they loved our area. And I can see that happening here. We moved here because we love this area. But I can see it getting destroyed real quickly where it's not hometown that a lot of you grew up in. With that, the other thing I was about to say, and I know we've got two minutes here, is that I feel that something of this magnitude should be voted on by the people. I've been through it and I've seen how it works. And real quickly, I had two people that represent my area and I called both and never got them. So I called and messaged, "Please call me back." That's why I'm here to speak, because I never got calls back. So if you want to represent the people, we need to vote.
Chris Hauser.
Thank you y'all for doing this tonight. It gives us all a chance to voice.
Chris Hauser, what district are you from, do you know?
I'm from my father and mother's.
You don't know what district?
I don't belong to a district. I'm sent in being. I think this is a bad idea. I think what it'll do is generate revenue like it has in the past. But what it'll also do is create more thumbs on our necks. This is all about creating codes, rules, regulations, and statutes. Okay? And then you have to have licenses. The definition of license is permission from a competent authority. To do an act without said permission would be illegal, a trespass, or a tort. Think about the marriage license. Are you telling me that it's illegal to get married? It is, according to the state, but you have to have licenses. What you're going to do with this is take more of our power away and give it to yourself. There's an old Roman axiom of law that states, "What you create, you control." Parents create their children. We created this government. This government is for our benefit. We allocate that power and authority to y'all, public servants, to do our bidding for us, not take money from us. This county's poor. This is the only county in the state that doesn't have zoning. And people like this man right here has moved to this county more than likely for freedom.
Freedom.
We're not getting that here. So unless you're being listened closely, a lot of people don't even know this document exists. It is the Tennessee Constitution which y'all sworn up to. And in here it says, Article 31.
Start your time, sir.
I'm wearing the Constitution. Yeah, don't want to learn, don't want to mine what y'all sworn up to.
Derek Kittle.
Kittle. Fifth district. My name is Dr. Derek Kittle. To substantiate with some people, I'm PhD in public economics. I've served my country. I spent 10 years teaching in Georgia. But more important is I grew up in a place called Plank County, Georgia, a place so corrupt it's been under faith or federal investigation in the last 50 years. While I was there, I watched the powers that be leave the zoning boards when a handful of risk people could make money in the county and make no mistake. That's what this poorly written, lopsided Westwood will do. What else is in the mid? Two of the three powers given to the appeals board, the ones that give power to the homeowner, to the landlord. The first one allows the appeals board to override a decision by the term right here. The enforcement office, who can fine you with $500, $50 per day. And you've got no choice without that ability for the appeals board here, but go to court. How many less than George the risk of $1,500 a month on a lawsuit where the county dragged it out for years? The internet is full of stories in places like California, New York, Maryland, where people fought up zoning code violation and had to sell their property to the government because they were bankrupt, because the fees applied over and over again. There's no cap to it. There's no reason why you could delay to make money that far. There's no way to cause it. The other one allows the Board of Zoning Appeals to take a look at your situation. If, and I quote, "Reef's an exceptional topographic conditions, the conditions, the strict application of any regulation, any of the sub-sections would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties to or excessive undue hardship," get a little higher. "Upon the homeowners' property," meaning if you have a weird piece of property too narrow, too steep, hard to get to, "you have to yield to the strict," the strict word, this rule, if.
Thank you, Mr. Kittle. Tamile Collins.
I'm also from Fifth District. And I'm going to keep saying what he just said. The document revealed that the TCA 13-7-105A states that the county legislative body only requires a majority vote of the entire board to amend the regulation if the regional planning commission of the regional which is the territory governed by the ordinance disproves changes within 30 days. Otherwise, it only requires a quorum. How easy would it be to wait until a few pig headed back with board members were out of town and quietly change the regulations? We all went through the law, right? Then there is one issue of how poorly written the document is. When lawyers debate the common placement on the meaning of laws, we cannot afford such shoddy documents to say. Consider the resolution's definition of law. A parcel plan which fronts on and has access to a public, publicly governmentally owned and maintained street. Is the planning board unaware, is the planning board unaware that the majority of Cock County's property only has access to ways privately owned roads that the county admittedly refuses to take possession of, even if they are designed and built in excess of what the county already owns? Are these owners even allowed to build on their property? Or do they have to wait until the county gets around to providing them with access to a public street? I won't even begin to discuss how the vague wording of the Planned Unit Development in Section 3 of the supplementary provisions leads citizens open to abuse. In some ways, the worst impact of the document lies in its crushing effect on small business. With the big city parking regulations, gone are the days when a common man or woman could open a shop in an unused building. The simple act of taking possession of the property would violate the grandfather laws, incurring huge expenses if the common client. Grandfathering would also mean that when your son or daughter inherits your property, there goes your grandfather clause because your property just changed hands. Not that the grandfather clause serves any real protection since the county legislative body can provoke it at any time. How long before they fix some of those problems in this resolution is still getting that little change.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
And before you think that's the end of the fight, what about the guilty?
Mr. Fason. John Fason.
I'm sure you know this is a generational type of stuff. It's going to affect us for generations, our kids. And I think we've heard from some people that explained why that would be such a problem. That leads me to ask the question.
What do you expect to see in the third?
Number one. That leads me to ask the question. One is the motivation of this. Fear. Somebody has to generate fear. Our very existence in a county is at stake, the mayor said. It's a moral imperative, the mayor said. Is that what's driving us, is we have this fear? Somebody said $50 a day and a misdemeanor fine over fear. In the June meeting, it was said, "This is not zoning." In the July meeting, it says, "We may need to look at soft zoning." In the August meeting, it was a full assault on the personal property rights and your right to be, do what you want to do in your own home and on small business. Someone mentioned a small business. Do you think for one second somebody with big money can't come in and rip this little document? It shreds. I don't know how much there is to be that somebody said, "I'm courting it." I do practice law, I'm a lawyer, but I practice law. I know what the words of a document mean. I practice the most complicated law in this country. And I'm telling you, word means a lot. This needs to be done right. Not against soft zoning. I love the idea of soft zoning that actually deals with distributing of mountains, the stairs that are on our mountains, and controlling the large capacity businesses that have the money, you have the energy, whatever they think, whatever small lady greets, whatever lawyer lady you bring in. I have gone before the planning commission. And I'm telling you, it's not an easy thing, put that thing together. And many of these people, small businesses, can't do it. They don't have the money to hire a lawyer to come do this type of thing. This needs to be done right. And to rush it through to have this meeting today and tomorrow to fail without any discussion, especially it's all session, you can't even discuss it. And before you to the next law, you can take the session for that.
Andy Austin.
I'm in the fourth district. He kind of talked on fear. I've never been to a CLB meeting ever in my life. Own a lot of property here in Cock County. And I'm scared. I'm feared. I'm feared for exactly what's been said here, that you're going to take something away from me that I, some of what I inherited from my grandpa, some of what I bought. I just hope that you all are open minded and don't have blinders on your eyes like that I've been told with some hat. I specifically called, I had questions. I didn't know where to find the document. I'm not into politics. I found the document. I called. I was told we didn't want farmers here to come in here and run the campgrounds. Well, look, I've been in a campground a whole lot. I've traveled all over the country in the campgrounds. I've been in really nice campgrounds. I've been in really dumpy campgrounds. But I'll tell you, with what's in this paper or the papers that you all have, it's not just about campground. This is a blanket policy that's going to affect everyone for generations to come. And it makes me worried for what my daughter's going to have, that I find out I'm not going to have any grandfather that my daughter's going to keep. So now she's going to be regulated, but I'm not going to get a tax deduction to it, am I? If I'm going to get a tax deduction, please let me know because my property is devalued by zoning. If I sold my property, a large sum of my property, if somebody was going to do something through it, they're zoned to death. So therefore, it's going to increase your taxes and they're not going to want to come. So now my property that I'm investing in is not worth as much money. I was told when I had questions that asked me if I had a basement, I should rent it out. Well, clarify, if you can't rent it out, it's a really good idea. But if I was going to rent it out, I would rent it out on some property that I have, not in my basement. That's completely absurd. It should never be talked down to when the landowner has a valid question. I was also asked about a unicorn. If we told you can't have unicorns here, then everybody's going to come in tomorrow with a vulgar word complaining about unicorns. I hate to tell you, unicorns ain't real. But land is real. And what I have is real. Everybody in here is going to be scared.
Robert, I'm not sure what that last name is. B-A-R-D.
Bart.
Bart, second district.
I've never been to one of these meetings. You want to talk about small town, they call me a U. What you need to do is realize you can't kill a little guy. I've got kids. What I have, I want, I don't know. There's people here on thousands of acres, good for them. I am too. But I don't want zoned out of where I live and want to do my property. After things get so rotten, they rot on the vine, like tomatoes. You need to keep growing. Don't let it get so bad that this town rots and there's nothing good left. You need to leave little people alone and not be making rules where we don't have a say so. Whatever one of y'all need to do is go listen to Paul Harvey, freedom from chains. You'll be taxed to death. If that's what you want to do to us, you will. And we can't stop it. But the public doesn't want this. And you should ask for it instead of having a meeting where we can ask, but you don't say, and then tomorrow you vote for it. That's not fair.
Bailey in Norwood.
That's me again. Thank you again for your time. I want to reiterate, I hope everyone who received the email from the Ray's office of the fraudulent link form planning commission. This all starts with zoning. And you have Mr. Willis, Mr. Morgan, and I, they're 28 years, 25, 30 years. If it wasn't formed by state statute, it is fraudulent. It needs to stop. As a good friend told me, I'm not against all zoning, but you can't put whipped cream on a cow caddy and it won't get eaten. If you want to get rid of the planning commission, the CLB can stand in that capacity until and unless they want to do something. We need fair people, not people with an agenda, not people trying to make developers jump through hoops. I jumped through their hoops and I saved them and I won. I got it, I let it just get back. Why? Because they're fraudulent. The insurance would not even pay a penny, not a penny, towards their lawsuit costs. All the tax hater's ate up that, and I ate up quite a bit. At one time, I was $125,000 out of pocket to save 70. I didn't do that because I have a lot of money. I did that because it was the right thing to do and I was trying to teach my daughter. Mr. Mathis knows this. I have presented this to them, as I have presented it to many people. And when nothing's done and when no official question has happened, you have to do something. I have hours and hours of audio tapes of their readings. I share them with anybody. I have deposition in my lawsuit with Mr. Morgan, Mr. Willis, and another did not tell the truth when asked a question. And how do I know this? Because this is what they said in the lawsuit and I have the audio tapes that say something else. All I'm asking, would we like to use my post coming and progress with caution? But you'll save a lot of lawsuits.
Ralph Lawson.
Second district, Bart. Hello, I'm Ralph Lawson. I spoke at the last CLB and planning commission meetings about my concern regarding an RV park being put behind and beside my house. Just recently, about 10 days ago, we found out they're trying to put six within 75 yards of my backyard. Think about that. All I'm asking, again, I'm asking you, please step up like our surrounding counties and protect the landowners of Cock County from this nightmare. I know a lot of people don't think it's nightmare, but when it comes to your children, being able to go outside and knowing who's going to be here next to my neighbor, it's a big deal. I want to say thank you to the CLB board for getting us here and also to the planning commission for sending back. And to our mayor, Rob Mathis, for letting me even have a voice to this certain situation that's plaguing our county. Appreciate you, did the best you could.
Thank you, sir. Jerome Riddick.
Okay, I'm going to start talking right here. Somebody told a lie. My mobile homeowners all pay taxes. And you can prove it. Everybody in my mobile home park pays taxes and I pay taxes. So don't think they don't pay taxes. But I'm going to read this and I'll comment. "Zoning is a very important issue to me, a lot of my people. If voted in, that this will affect our income, our livelihood for many years to come. We are requesting to be grandfathered in to operate within our 14 and a half acres like we have for over 30 years. We are currently cleaning up our park. It is a long-term rental park. It's already built. We're updating the utilities to remain a long-term rental park. We want to be able to complete and reconstruct without interruption. I also understand that new board, including Lucas Graham, has ordered a zoning study that costs the taxpayers about $80,000 and the study has not even come back yet. And it's about what this will do, the impact on this county. So why are y'all voting tomorrow night before this comes back?"
Come on.
"I feel that this board, of all of you, 14 people, have been sold a bill of goods that is not any good for any of us and the life that we chose to live here in this county. Your families will suffer and your children of the future will suffer along with all of us. This is a little bit of freedom that we enjoyed in Cock County. It was one of the best reasons to live in this beautiful county. All of this will be taken away by you 14 people alone. This is just the first step in selling the whole county out to big corporations and companies that have the deep pockets to build big RV parks and big campgrounds. But it's all about zoning. You'll have to get a permit to build a porch. What I plan to do is what the majority of the people elected you to do is to vote no on zoning. I feel that you're not following the agenda, that someone has convinced you that you're doing the best thing for your county. The government control is never best."
Thank you, Ms. Riddick.
Fourth.
Fourth, okay, thank you.
All due property.
Thank you.
But I think it turns a bit, because I don't understand knowing hundreds, thousands of people was going to turn out, why you have it in such a small venue that the people can't even hear what's going on about their property. I understand, maybe it's not your reporting, but what the hell good does that do? You know, they can't say nothing. So I think that's a misjustice. Second, I want to know, are y'all going to do the will of the people which I hear knows zoning? Or are you going to do the will of what the government wants to do?
They ain't going to answer no question.
Yeah, I know. Even though they said a couple meetings ago, you know, they'd answer questions. They are answering questions, sir. But anyways, I both know, just like I said at the last meeting, I think it did that to big property. I moved here, I've had family live in Cock County for tens and tens of years. I'm from Gatlinburg. Of course, you know, the cause of being Gatlinburg will go back before it's crossed the line. But I just totally, again, in fact, if you need money for the county, it's fine another way. You know, I'm willing to pay more with the tax or whatever, but no, don't. You're misrepresenting the people. How many, how many people did y'all talk to, to come to this and say, "So, 100?"
John Home.
Good job, good job. Good job, Terry.
I'm in the first district. Thank you, sir. Okay, 100 is your order. Once they say they're passing, they're in there. When they're in there, you don't get them back out. And what's going to happen? Planning commission, okay, I've dealt with them multiple times. I built a small business behind my house. I fought one of your planning commissioners. He fought through the nail the whole way. Said, "I got it, finally, it's legal, then legal, then legal again." And he's still busting that. It's never enough. We've got a watered-down version right now of orders. You think they're going to stay there? They're going to ask for more, then they're going to ask for more on top of that, then more on top of that. They're going to keep going until we get back to that original Tom's looking version we had at first. And I've got children. Got one right now, says, "Hey, wait, he's looking to sell his house, wants to buy a small farm." Now he wants to buy a farm in Jefferson County. Now he wants to buy farm jerky camp. Why? Because they're a little easier on their zoning and all their. Did y'all read the first version of this order, Mr. Grant? Did y'all read the first one? That's what we're gonna get back to. You know it, I know it, everybody in here knows it. Nobody wants it. I pay my taxes, I get my property. It's my property. Not somebody, I shouldn't have to go ask permission to build a wood shed. I shouldn't have to go ask permission to put a small business behind my house. Now, if your small business is out of house and a road goes through the subdivision to get that small business? They can have it. They can zonage it, Mr. Grant.
Pardon? That's it?
I'm sorry, Mary. I've tried reaching my representatives, and one of them's number says, "We don't take calls from you." Their number is blank. I don't know why, I've never called before. The other one went voicemail, so, you know, maybe he had people to listen to it, or maybe they were submitting that he just didn't pay attention. I don't know. But I tried. So now I came down here tonight to talk. I don't think 14 people should be making the decision. 26,418 Cock County citizens from the 2021 census. I was unable to find the number. I don't have internet yet, unlike some of you, because we just seem to be able to get that in Hartford. We live too far out in the boones. So I wasn't able to find how many people actually voted in the last election. But I assume that 14 people is fair representation of the number of people who vote. So I'm doing my conclusion right now. How many, I'm gonna do a straw poll vote for y'all. How many of you object to leave zoning? Raise your hands.
No zoning.
No zoning.
No zoning.
Okay, how many of you are kind of on the fence? Okay, nobody's on the fence. There are full of them. How many of you are actually, or every single word in the paper? That you don't think?
It's affecting us personally, real bad.
I understand that. And I'm sorry you bought land that didn't have restrictions around it.
Hold on, hold on. Address the board.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. But there is restricted land. The handful of these types of holding cynic people come here, and they want to buy it. When you buy unrestricted land, it's kind of the old saying, let the buyer beware. You just said I am opposed to this. So my two representatives from the first district, everyone I have spoken with in that district says no. I hold question to this. Hey, my phone is, what's your name?
Uh, Otis Lancer?
I'm back. Zoning laws.
What district, first one?
Huh?
What district?
Second. Zoning laws. They might help the rich and powerful, hurts the poor. How many of y'all from the poor? How many of you from the rich? Think about it. 225 years ago, our county congress will look to y'all and say no. Think about that. If you need taxes, why don't you tax the items that you're so concerned about? Instead of zoning something that you're hurting everybody else here. Also, who's gonna pay for the zoning commissioners running around? Pay for a vehicle? Us. Who's gonna pay when somebody sues you all? You're not gonna pay. The county's gonna pay. Okay? Whether they win or lose, it's gonna cost the county money. Think about that. Zoning laws are socialist. I'll, and I'll give this to the head guy if you're done. So check your report. For the foundation of economic education, most rationalists are zoning, giving them the NSA strength from pragmatic, self-interest motives. So it's got somebody's best interest part, not in your. Zoning should be seen as a local socialism. It is a national socialism, city-state style of a program. Zoning socialism add him to replace the merited decisions of an area's inhabitants with the decisions of a few politicians. And I could read a lot more in here, but I think you get the idea. Okay? And the only secret of the bundle boom of adult, adult business, shirt clubs, you're hoping to stop the zoning. Well, there's a case in New York. They put up zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Webster.
And you know what happened? They got sued, and the county paid for it.
Drake?
Put in for a vote.
DeLuca?
Yeah.
Drake, DeLuca. In what district, sir?
Not sure. I got the Cubs down there and a few other places. Got Motel.
Okay.
Down there in Cosby. I got a few places in Cosby, and I've dedicated them to the locals. Because we got real problems. There's too many rules and regs, and it's destroyed the housing industry. So my motels are now for locals. Too many rules and regs just make things difficult for the common folks. And yes, some of my people are undesirable. I understand you don't want people on top of one another. But we got a lot of people that don't have a place to stay. And you know what? These zoning laws are gonna make things a lot more difficult. I realize we don't have enough rules and regs here. And that's why somebody up in here keeps sending the state to try to shut me down. They were in cahoots with Newport Utilities to cut the power off at one of my places. You know what? I got disabled people. I got people on breathing machines. I put up over 100 heads of your people. And you want more rules and regs? You want to make things more difficult? I don't, I, I don't think we're gonna give you permission. We're gonna tear up your permit. And it's not just about me. I'm here, and I'm grandfathered in, because I got my businesses. But you know what? My boys don't grow up. In just a few years, they might start their own businesses, and it's gonna be a little bit prohibitive. But all that can start a business is these corporations and these people that have about $5 million in assets just to get started. These permissions are all about pay-to-play. You might not be paying the government, but you're gonna pay this agency, and this certified person, and this certified person with this insurance. And pretty soon, all of a sudden, that $20, $20 room that somebody's renting costs more than $60 a night. And that's just a shame. We got enough problems. I've got, you know, if I got a field, and I wanna put some tents out there, and I wanna rent them out on Airbnb, or Hip Count, or whatever, and I got 10 places out there on about 10, 11 acres, all of a sudden, I can't do it anymore. Because I used to just let them borrow that four-wheeler and go out there and get on.
Thank you, sir.
David Fisher, thank you. When you start with your definitions, I have a huge problem with what is access. It says, "The right to cross between public and private property, therefore permitting pedestrians and vehicles to enter any property in addition to utility purposes." So that doesn't restrict anyone from crossing across my property into the Cherokee National Doors. Because my property fronts a road, and then goes all the way to the Cherokee National Doors. And you're saying that I can't stop them. I have a problem. I have a problem with U V and your rightways, because they don't have a rightway on my property. Their poles are over 100 feet into my property. And they trespass last week, and they've done almost $600,000 worth of damage to my farm. And I'm still waiting on another call for them to make an appointment to see what we can do. Because they didn't listen. It's been a few weeks from the first time that I contacted them and said, "You are in the area. Do not come on my property." And they wanted me to sign an agreement that is not an option. I should have an option to say, "You cannot spray pesticides, herbicides on my property." I have 75 hides of bees on my farm. And I have two mares that I bred this year that are $200,000 in horses. Not counting the other six that I have. They spray braze on, eh, well, it's a, their brand is on braze on. But braze on stays in horses' urine and manure for six months to a year. And it will kill your garden if I give it to you, put in your garden. I don't allow it on my farm. And they didn't listen.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick.
I asked my team, this pod, to vote no on zoning.
And I also asked, I also asked that on the fourth cue back, you have, you have a very, very, very bad picture that needs to be taken off, because I have my nine-year-old son here.
Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm here today.
What district, girl?
I'm here today because the situation that's going on here, it appears that no one is, I own property here in East Park County, and everyone needs to be listening, because I'm in the real estate in the real estate 27 years. So you've got to take into consideration all the evidence and what's going on here. I'm not against zoning. I'm against raping the mountaintops, yes. But some of this stuff, you're gonna eliminate the little man. And when I say the little man, I'm talking about the people that live here, that has born and raised here. And when these plans are in place, they're not gonna be able to have a business. They're not gonna be able to feed their families. So you have to take that into consideration. I looked around, I've seen one people, two people, three others. And it appears that I guess a decision's already been made. But, you know, let's not kid it. You've got to listen to the people. You've got to listen to the people. My timing it?
No, no, you still got that.
Okay. Well, these big corporations are coming here and bopping up everything. Okay? So what that does is the big guys are gonna win, and the little guys work where there's no industry in the county. And they've had to drive to severe county and work in service industry jobs. They can't even be able to afford a home. You know, if you're gonna eliminate all this other stuff, they can't afford a home. So what happens there? You want more people on the street? Do you as a taxpayer? Do you want more taxes taken out so that we can take care of the homeless people that are on the street? I'm, I'm not sure what the statistics are right now. I'm sure the sheriff can tell you what, how, how it's exploded and homeless people on the street these days. And I'm sure you don't get that. But what happens when you take small business away for the people that live here can't afford to run a business? Then you shoot them in the foot when you're fighting away from big corporations, big turnips coming here and ruining everything. Do you really want that?
Thank you, Mr. Riddick. Elaine, Elaine's seat? Elaine's seat?
Elaine, her, her, hold on, sir. She's coming from the hall.
Can't count my minutes off, because I couldn't get in the room.
In what district are you from? What district do you?
I don't even know. I live in Cosby, up across the National Park.
Okay, thank you.
Supposed to need to tell you what I'm fixing to do. I got six acres. And I'm tired living up here. And I got two two-acre plots. And I'm fixing to sell them to a cryptocurrency company. And they're gonna put up a metal building on each of those lots, and it will be a jet engine running 24/7. And you can't stop them. You're gonna not have to shut down Smoky Mountain Elementary, because they do not learn from hearing all the 60s, the jetties, and her cycles going through their heads. And so we're talking about all kinds of other things, but we are sitting ducks for this. And you may think you don't care. Guess what? These things, these cryptocurrency places, take a tremendous amount of energy. They come here because TVA is cheap. But they're gonna use so much TVA, TVA is about even more. Who knows what happens when TVA buys energy? Our power goes to work. We run out. They've got this in Limestone. They've got this in, uh, across over in North Carolina. And you're not gonna be able to sell your property. They're gonna come to your house and wanna buy it when they go inside, and all they hear is this jet engine running. And you can't sleep. And so my plea is that is on commission, look into this and get things set where we can keep these people from terrorizing us, making money. If there's no money for us, they hire like 20 people, their money's all in the mope. If there's no money for us, it causes prices of power to go up for us. But the answer's easy. Mizzou Missouri has already solved this. All we have to do is contact them and adopt what they did, not to block it, but to make them be good citizens if they choose to come to our area. So I think this is a threat that's coming in. We're sitting ducks as more places have shut this down. Oh, by the way, China stopped all of them. Made them lose out, because there was this. So it's that. So by the way, I'm not really selling. I just don't give a.
Susan Davis? Susan Davis?
Okay, I'm a rich, not poor, I live in Manhattan. Second district.
So, thank you.
I'm born and raised here. I'm here for a reason. My husband was in the military 21 and a half years. We bought property in a little town called Bell City. They zoned. We got fired. Trash can was on the curb too loud, because we didn't have a parking lot. We got $50 fired. Every time he turned around, our grass was this much too tall. It kept hitting rain in the lawn mower plates for the best of it. And he just, every time he turned around, it was soggy. As far as zoning businesses and making them pay their partial taxes, I'm all for it. When you start kicking out people that's residents and part of the year, I don't care if they build a hen house. Next minute, I'm not talking about chickens, people. If it bothers my kids, they put up a protest. I care what my neighbor does. I care what goes on in my property. And if everybody else just, they're sitting there on property. And I said, I'll be friends. Just mind your own business and live with my expenses. I love it.
Thank you. Danny, C A T O N? Could you tell us what district you're in?
I live in Hartford.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, I don't know my number. They said, "Talk real loud." Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
All right. So in March, my community approached ourselves and let us know of a development in the area. People told me that they contacted CCP and were told, "Take the money now, because zoning encodes is coming to your area." In April, we approached the CLB about the development. We were told there is no development. Development doesn't exist until there is infrastructure and incentives asked for. I was also told by Ottinger, "What do you want us to do? They're zoning encodes in your area." I was also told, "What do you want us to do about it? We can't control who people sell their land to." In June, the planning commission was approached for a one-page resolution for large-scale developments, just to get checks and balances. Now, all of a sudden, the tiny homes are seen as a financial crisis for the county. And zoning must be done now. To me, everything doesn't line up. Because if people are renting areas from a business, that business is paying taxes. The land they're on is paying taxes. You can always deny someone a business license for things like that. The zoning here is a lot about residential control. It shows nothing for large-scale developments such as resorts, or anything of the same, that seems to be what the CCP is trying to bring in. Everyone here wants factory jobs and more industry, yet none of that's brought. Everyone here wants factory jobs and more industry, yet none of that's brought in. We're told that they won't come in without zoning and codes, yet you had Conover here for how many years operating without zoning and codes? So for me, nothing adds up and I think an audit should be made of the CCP, the CLB, the mayor and everybody else. Wherever they go, if anyone's getting paid out for anything.
Thank you.
So that, that's it.
Jeanne Silva, yes, I, y'all all right?
Uh, still, yes, I, okay. Still.
Okay, still, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hi, folks, I'm wearing the new gift, okay? I just said it back in nineteen eighties when I got to retirement age, I wanted to be living in a fifth wheel. So when I got tired of my neighbors, all I had to do was move it. My first one came down here into Tennessee in two thousand and six. This is the fourth county I've lived in. The other counties I was in, they said, you can't stay there all the time. You can only stay a certain number of days out of the year. I was an over-the-road truck driver. This works perfect for me. I can do this. I came here to Cott County. I fell in love. With Cott County, definitely no man. I worked on a pigeon forge on one of your pink jeep tour guides, taking people in, showing them the mountains, showing them the wonderful things we have. But if they go to what I saw in the first papers when they were saying where if you're in an RV, you can only stay there for twenty-nine days, you're creating homelessness right there. Because if I have to move every twenty-nine days, where am I gonna go? There's no place to go. So, oh, I'm number four. I just realized. I started talking right back there. But, you know, to me, it doesn't make sense being in an established park like I am. We follow the rules as they were laid out at the time the park opened thirty years ago. But it's a good, safe place to live. It's a good place to be proud of and that's what I want. I make my money over there. I spend my money here. You know, my taxes are paid by my rent because I know my landlord pays your taxes. Don't believe her if she says she does. Thank you so much.
Deborah. Uh, so V A H E R. Mark, okay. And which district is Mark?
Pardon me?
Which district?
Cosby.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm with the public response period extended. Um, there are a lot of folks out in the yard, there are a lot of folks in the hall, I know that you can hear this. And as far as accessing online, we know that that's problematic here for a lot of folks in the outlying counties. My internet is unreliable and very expensive and it's hard for a lot of people to get access in public. Comment means listening to the public. Um, I don't believe that there's been enough time with this legislation. I've got twenty-four page article to read. I understand it's been tweaked a little bit because of Facebook comments. I don't know if that's true or not because I haven't seen a final draft. Um, citizens need to have time to read, consider the actual legislation, however it is you're gonna pass. It seems like twenty-four hour scheduling of twenty-four hours after a public hearing is unconscionable to me. Um, they need to at least feel listened to and they need to have time to think about the legislation. I believe a referendum would be appropriate here, let citizens vote on it. These regulations seem to target, target everyday citizens. This whole, in my opinion, what I've seen is a small group of concerned citizens came to the CLB concerned about large development. This seems to mostly be with normal citizens, normal landowners around here. Um, and I don't think it's very well-written personally. Um, citizens' quality of life should be paramount in any legislation. Other municipalities focus on this aspect while they're writing drafts and I don't feel that that is happening here. Um, and I would, I think that written comments need to be addressed. People need to have a way that weren't able to speak tonight to have their view be heard. So I hope that you guys would consider that. Um, I also hope you consider a referendum. This is important legislation and it's very contentious. As you can see, you were ill-prepared for the number of people that came out. There are people in the lawn, people in the hallway, people that wanted to speak and were not able to.
Thank you. Hannah Sturt Patrick?
I don't hear, I mean, there anything that's going on, but there are a lot of people outside. Just that you guys know. Um, so.
And which district?
Uh, I'm in district one.
Okay, thank you.
Back in twenty twenty-two, this field, I don't know if you guys were elected at that point, you guys were looking at codes and zoning with, uh, Tina Baldwin. And what has ever happened to that? We're supposed to have community outreach. It should be up to the community to at least have a say in how this goes down. Um, you guys are voting in less than twenty-four hours into me and this is a lot side, it kind of looks like you guys are gonna have your minds made up. So, um, hopefully you guys take all this info now and listen to what we're saying because we're not saying no, but we wanna have a voice in this and this is literally feels like it's already over, so. Um, and I do wanna see something about like economic impacts, you know, what is it gonna do or can it clear-cut the chops? Like, can we do something about that? I don't know. I think that's kind of important. Um, and that's really all I have to say. So thank you guys for allowing us to be here and hopefully mine is not made up yet and hopefully we are able to at least sway you in the direction of an open conversation.
Thank you. Jeffrey Billy?
Sorry, I'm not sure where this has been happening. I've been out all the whole time. I can't hear anything.
In what district do you live in, sir?
I'm not sure what district. I live in Recount.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Um, but what I wanna say is we just moved here a couple of years ago, um, because we viewed this as one of the last few free places in this country left to move to. Where you had the freedom to do what you wanted with your land. We had the choice to move anywhere else. We couldn't move anywhere else. We were from popular values. We chose to move here because of the freedom to do what we wanted to do with our land. Okay? Now, I know many of you probably have good intentions and many of the people in this room probably have good intentions with what you're trying to do, but you gotta think, it's opening the door. You open the door, the people after you can take that. If you all have good intentions, that's fine. But the people after you can be corrupt and they can do with it what they want. And we all know, I've heard stories about what goes on in severe county, you know, and Gattler. It's all about reasonable, money up. It's, it's what they want, though. All right? And those homeowners with no money have no rights, no freedoms. So this needs to be a hard knock, you know? Even if your intentions are good on this, you can't open the door. Because this is the thing, even if you say you're gonna make it good right now, years down the road, if people think they're grandfathered in, they're fine. We all know years down the road, that's gonna be it. Zoning is zoning, plain and simple. Thank you.
Mary Brady?
I'm in district one.
Thank you.
Um, so I, everybody has said a lot that's on my mind, so as far as what I have to add, I guess I just want to say, I also agree. I think that I'm sure that the intentions were good, but, um, the public has not been made a part of the process of determining what the future of this county is. And that's my biggest concern is, um, that the public was never informed or asked or their views were considered, um, in any reasonable fashion. Um, and so I also wanna ask you all as, um, board members, when you go to vote, to consider who you're representing and what they want and not just make up your own mind about what you think is best or be convinced by, you know, what maybe just this administration feels is best. So, um, um, and, you know, I wanna say, you know, I, I feel like your mayor is a very qualified, well-qualified, very intelligent guy and, um, he's, he's a smart man. Um, so I, I respect, you know, his leadership for the county, but, um, I, I feel like it was a misstep to, um, move and rush into this without, um, really bringing the community into it.
Thank you. Jennifer Steele? Jennifer Steele? And what's the district of Steele?
District one. So I know I don't sound like you, but I have lived here over twenty years. So, I'm in Del Rio. I, I do basically agree with this, some of this everything. I think we do need something put into place, but I don't really understand the reasoning behind what is being proposed, that it seems to affect all of us so much more than the things that I certainly worry about, which is large corporations clear-cutting the tops off mountains. People coming in and doing whatever they want. There's already a couple of instances of that, of that in Del Rio where somebody just came up from, I think from Florida in an RV. He cut his driveway straight through somebody else's property. I mean, how's that supposed to work? You know, that's, those are the things that concern me. And also the fact that I do not wanna live next door to a Buc-Ee's or whatever you call it. So, but the things that are bothering my life with the general public, with the, um, the instances of people not being able to do what they want to with their own property, I don't agree with that. I think, you know, we've all lived here a long time. We've, um, you know, we've all managed very well, really. I don't see that there's ever really a problem with what any of us do on our property. It's what concerns me is what's, what's gonna happen in the future. You know, what's, yeah, we're gonna look like in another twenty years. It's changed so much in the over twenty years that I've lived there already. It's just incredible how different it is. And I find it quite sad, really, that it's, you know, coming to that and it's just gonna get worse unless something is done to prevent that. So that's my two cents worth.
Thank you.
I wanna thank everybody that's come out tonight and expressed their opinions. I appreciate it, the forum, the everybody's help. It is, this is, you know, this is a, a issue that people say has been very high-shamed on both sides. Um, so I just wanna thank you all for kind of, with that in mind, uh, kind of, if we have a motion there, do we have a second? All those embarrassed, say aye?
Aye.